Welcome to Candidates Comment, a public service presentation of CTN. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, all candidates running for Ann Arbor City Council were asked to share their platforms and ideas from home. Candidates who participate will be shown in alphabetical order.
Hello, my name is Ann Bannister and I serve as Award One City Council member. I'm running for reelection because I want to continue my efforts to have local government put people first. I'm a listener, a learner, a problem solver, and a champion of plain language and full disclosure in local government. I'm honored that my neighbors would like me to continue as a public servant. As a lifelong resident, I have the broad historical knowledge to continue to serve our neighborhoods and local businesses, especially in these ever-changing and challenging times. Over my first two and a half years on council, I've set a new standard for constituent service, carrying over the high standards of my day job to amplify the voices of the people who live, work, and retire in our city. The foundation of our work is to promote positive, appropriate change. My goals are to continue to build on the momentum that residents, council members, and staff have created as we work together on data-driven decision-making and fiscal responsibility. As we overcome the challenges of COVID-19, I will continue to work for human services designed to protect our most vulnerable residents. I voted for the A20 Carbon Neutrality Plan and will continue to initiate and implement strategies to reach our goals. I support Police Chief Cox and the Independent Community Police Oversight Commission as we work towards protecting all citizens equitably and with dignity and ending systemic racism. I advocate for improved roads and pedestrian safety, clean water, and protection for our natural features and historic preservation. With regard to growth and density, I will continue to vote for responsible development that is harmonious with our neighborhoods and local business. I'm focused on a future for the city where the needs of growth, infrastructure, the environment, and financial considerations are balanced and in equilibrium. I have a strong voting record for affordable housing and voted for developing the Y lot and for developer-provided affordable housing contributions such as these projects in Ward One. The Glenn Hotel PUD, half a million dollars. The Garnet PUD, over eighty-eight thousand dollars. The Broadway Park PUD contribution amount to be announced. I voted against rezoning Lower Town away from PUD because it resulted in the loss of nearly nine million in a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund. I support a pilot of transit-oriented development in the Briarwood area and improving the transit system along all corridors. I'm not in favor of indiscriminate blanket upzoning citywide that could negatively impact existing neighborhoods. Residents can reach me anytime and see me at meetings, events, and at council caucus on Sunday nights. Please visit bannisterforcouncil.com to see a growing list of testimonials, and please vote for Ann Bannister so that I may continue to work for you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Dish and I'm grateful for this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm a Democrat running for City Council in Ward One. I've lived here for the past 12 years, and I'm a professor at the University of Michigan in the Political Science Department. You can read more about me at my website, www.vodish.com. I've been having a lot of conversations with Ward One voters over the past few months, and one message comes through especially loud and clear: Ann Arbor is changing, and Ward One residents feel like they are bearing the brunt of its growing pains. Council can address these problems by ensuring that Ward One residents get their fair share of basic city services, like doing a better job regulating traffic on residential streets like Barton Drive and Pontiac Trail. These streets were never designed for the number of commuters they're seeing today. I will also work on developing more park-and-ride capacity along Plymouth Road and other major bus routes. I'm hearing from people that they're frustrated with the lack of communication between city council members and the community. This makes it hard for people to stay informed about initiatives that affect them and their neighbors. I will reach out to residents through newsletters, social media, and open office hours. I'd also like to explore bringing back the ward meeting, virtually of course. Now, it's important to acknowledge that we're facing a recession, and that means that people are worried about their basic services. I'm committed to ensuring that roads get repaired, the trash gets picked up, and that recycling finds its way to markets. There's another thing that's important to acknowledge is that great as life is here in Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor is not an exception. Racial injustice and economic stratification exist here like everywhere else in this country. I'm committed to changing state and local law to enable stronger independent community oversight of policing and to ensure accountability and transparency in cases of police violence. We have an opportunity to completely reimagine how policing is done here, and many in our community want to run with it. I want to be beside them. In closing, I've heard from many people who live in Ann Arbor now that they find themselves on the edge of leaving. For some, that edge looks like their next rent hike; for others, it's their first house because they can afford to rent but not to buy; and for still others, it's their retirement because they've lived here for decades but can't afford to downsize. We can encourage development of new housing opportunities in ways that enhance basic services for everyone, like making it legal to put housing on top of retail in commercial zones outside of downtown. This would give us more neighbors, more taxpayers, and more people to patronize our restaurants and share the cost of the city's basic services. Thank you, and take care.
Hello, I'm Jane Lum, and I'm running for reelection to Ann Arbor City Council in the Second Ward. Before diving in, I'd like to thank CTN for providing us this opportunity, and thank you for taking the time to listen and for caring about our community. It's been an honor to serve Second Ward residents, and I've worked hard to keep the promises I made when I was first elected: to be a responsible steward of your tax dollars, to proactively address key Second Ward issues, and to bring an independent, common sense voice to the council table. I've also worked to increase the level of engagement of residents in the decisions affecting them. Why? Because my years on City Council have taught me that no matter the issue, better outcomes are achieved when residents are actively participating in shaping the programs and plans. Our policy should always be built on robust citizen input. I've always believed a fundamental responsibility of city government is to align spending with community, not City Hall priorities. To that end, I championed efforts to conduct two citizen surveys of budget and spending priorities, as well as the city's adoption of a priority-based budgeting approach. I've authored over forty city budget amendments to reallocate spending to what you've told me are your priorities: fixing the roads, reinvesting in the water and sewer infrastructure, improving basic services including safety in our neighborhoods and pedestrian safety at schools, and ensuring funding for essential human services. I also led the fight for fair water rates. I was urged to run again by several council colleagues because they appreciate and find helpful my experience and knowledge, especially on the city budget and finances. The city and its residents are facing significant challenges resulting from the pandemic. Prioritization of scarce resources is now more necessary than ever. It is an important time for our city. Beyond addressing the financial challenges, the city will be considering major policy questions on zoning and land use. Some in our community favor eliminating single-family zoning or revising it dramatically. I do not. One other thing I've learned in my years as an elected official and my involvement with many community organizations is that Ann Arbor is a wonderful place to live in large part because of the strength and livability of our neighborhoods. I have not and will not support zoning changes that would place neighborhood integrity and livability at risk. An effective council member is both policymaker and problem solver. I've been asked to run again by many residents who appreciate the help I provided in solving a problem, navigating City Hall, or in speaking up on their behalf. I appreciate that, and proactively addressing Second Ward concerns will remain job one for me. I'm hopeful I've been able to earn the vote of Second Ward residents in the August 4th Democratic primary. Thank you for your consideration and for listening.
Hello, I am Lynn Song, one of the Democratic candidates for City Council Ward Two. I'm currently the President of the Ann Arbor District Library Board of Trustees and was elected in 2016. My training and education lends itself well to local politics. I have a Master's in Social Work from the University of Michigan in Policy Evaluation. I have an undergraduate degree in Political Science. My professional work has been responsive to community needs, from working with U of M's Healthy Asian Americans Project to anti-trafficking and anti-fraud work in international and domestic adoptions. I also led the Ann Arbor Educational Foundation, was a project director at nonprofit enterprise at work. My board service includes the Nutrzone Teen Center, well before my own children routines, as well as the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation and Avalon Housing. The 2016 election year was a busy one for me, as I also led the U of M Bus Depot protests. University officials continue to credit my organizing efforts as informing their community engagement when it comes to future development plans. All of my work reflects on my upbringing by refugee parents, who taught me to always hold more than one job and help others along the way. I manage a collaborative and forward-thinking board with the library, a seventeen million dollar budget with a healthy fund balance, and most importantly, I support an institutional culture of innovation and trust with our union staff members. I approach politics like with all projects, as an opportunity to learn, speak with community members, see who's missing from the conversation, and understand best practices. What brings me to this candidacy has been an evolution of thought and awareness of local politics. The entirety of my adulthood has been here in Ann Arbor as a student renter, restaurant worker, young professional, nonprofit leader, mother, and community organizer. This is what I bring to council, the experience of communicating with community and building trust with the people from all walks of life. Council does not have to be pro or anti-development, but pro-people, and there are very real everyday struggles. For the past decade, I've asked my neighbors, "Don't you want your adult children to be able to live in Ann Arbor, return here, and raise your grandchildren here to experience what you had provided to them decades ago?" This means we need to come at affordability and the housing crisis as an interconnected frame of issues with regional transit, multiple modes of transit including bike and pedestrian-friendly options, and density along transportation corridors to limit the impact of carbon emissions. We manage to sustain what we love about our city while welcoming new Ann Arborites, the next generation. One community's well-being is not at the expense of the other. I would like the opportunity to bring good governance, positive and effective collaborative work from my experiences with the Ann Arbor Public Schools and the Ann Arbor District Library. Thank you for considering supporting my candidacy.
Hello, and thanks for watching. My name is Tony Brown, and I'm here to tell my neighbors what they can expect from me if I serve them on City Council, and to ask for your vote. One of the first questions I often get when connecting with neighbors is, of course, "Why are you running for City Council?" In the words of the songwriter Zach de La Roca, "It has to start somewhere, it has to start sometime, what a better time than now." The other question I usually get is, "Can you tell me a little bit about yourself?" Well, folks, I'm as Ann Arbor as you get. I grew up in Ward Three, sang in school choir, I was an All-State wrestler at Pioneer in Huron, and graduated from Community High, and then over to WCC and on to the U of M Dearborn. I started my career in public radio in Ann Arbor more than thirty years ago at WCBN. Now I work at WDET as the station's digital content manager. You know, throughout my public radio reporting, I've seen what happens when people and communities don't have a voice. I know what local governments look like when leaders stand with their constituents, because ineffective political leadership leads to social and racial inequality and just wasted tax dollars. What are my issues? My issues are your issues: affordable housing, taxes, neighborhoods, environmental equity for all, arts and culture, and governmental responsiveness. And if elected, I'll be there to listen to you, report to you, and shape public policy based on what you want, need, and have to say. These are some extraordinary times, and this election is critical. Ann Arbor residents and their elective representatives will affect some challenging times, both personal and professionally. So now, more than ever, we need the council members who make decisions based on facts, not political alliances. And here's something about Tony Brown I want you to remember: I'm not a political insider, I'm a public radio journalist, a resident of Pittsfield Village, husband to my brilliant wife, Betsy, I love to work, I love the city we call home. But one more thing: isn't it true that local governments can always do better? It's true. Successful cities have local leaders who listen and make fact-based decisions and work to improve city services. These cities always thrive. You elect Tony Brown, I'll get the job done. If you have any questions, visit my website at atontonybrown.com. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Travis Redina, a resident of the Arbor Oaks Bryant Neighborhood, and I'm running for City Council because I believe that Ann Arbor residents pay for and deserve better-than-basic public services, because access to clean drinking water should be a basic human right, and because we are in the midst of a housing and affordability crisis that is threatening our city's future. I'm running to help achieve our ambitious carbon neutrality goals and to expand upon our city's long history of leadership on human and civil rights. I'm running to ensure that City Council is responsive, accessible, and transparent. But most importantly, I'm running because I am the most experienced and qualified candidate to tackle these challenges. I grew up the proud son of a UAW autoworker and a public school employee. They instilled in me the value of hard work and the importance of giving back. Both of those things led me into a life of public service. I volunteered on my first political campaign at the age of fourteen. At U of M, I was active in the College Democrats and with other social and political movements on campus. After graduating in 2008, I worked on Mark Shower's successful congressional campaign, and then spent five years working as a constituent services director, and later as legislative director to the Democratic floor leader in the Michigan House of Representatives. From that work, I have a deep understanding of policy, know how to work across political divides to get things done, and understand that government should work well for the people it serves. I moved back to Ann Arbor in 2013 to work for the Alumni Association at U of M, but I wanted to continue my history of public service. That's why I'm serving in my fourth term as President of the Jim Toy Community Center, and for the last two years have served as the city's LGBTQ liaison. I am dedicating myself to improving the lives of my neighbors and of the community that I love. I'm running for City Council because Ann Arbor is already a great place to live, but we still have work to do if we want the Ann Arbor of tomorrow to continue being a prosperous, inclusive, and desirable place to live, work, raise your family, and eventually retire. The work ahead of us is critically important, and I cannot do it all alone. That's why I'm asking you to join me in this effort. Please visit my website at travisredina.com. That's where you can learn more about me and my platform, but also where you can sign up to get involved in my campaign. Finally, I'm asking for your vote in the Democratic primary on August 4th, or sooner, if like many of us, you're going to be voting by absentee ballot. It would truly be my honor to serve as your next Third Ward Council member, and if elected, I look forward to working with each and every one of you to make our community an even better place to live. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Evan Redmond, and I'm running for Ann Arbor City Council in Ward Three. I've had the wonderful opportunity to live in Ann Arbor for over ten years, and I'm running because we need a change. I worked hard to get accepted into the undergraduate program at the University of Michigan in 2009, but I couldn't have graduated without the support of my family, and I'm incredibly fortunate to have them. I worked hard at my job at the Michigan Institute for Clinical and Health Research, but was able to buy a condo in Ann Arbor at a relatively low price because it came on the market at the exact right time. Every day at the hospital, I would see equally hard-working cooks, cleaners, and patient care professionals take the bus out of town because they could not and cannot afford to live in the city where they work. I can't help but put myself in their shoes. If something had happened differently in my life, I may not have been able to live in such a great city with such great friends and neighbors, and that's why I'm running. Hopefully, I can provide the working class a voice in City Council that's been ignored for too long. My platform is three main planks. Firstly, and most crucially, we need to address climate change and the resiliency of our neighborhoods. City Council has declared a climate emergency in 2019, but there is a little public faith in this action. I'm worried that it'll go the same way as the declared police oversight emergency in 2014 and the affordable housing emergency declared in 2015, which is to say lip service with little to no action. Secondly, I propose a massive expansion of publicly-owned housing within the city of Ann Arbor. Need to be able to house more people in our city, because it's the moral thing to do, but also to cut down on carbon emissions produced by vehicles. Because rent control is illegal on a state level, we cannot simply turn our prized real estate over to developers, but rather take the land that we have and to begin to build our own units. Thirdly, Ann Arbor is overpoliced, and the citizens have no say in what happens within the Ann Arbor Police Department. I propose reallocating funds from our overinflated police budget of thirty million dollars this year alone and spending it on other community improvement projects. Furthermore, elected officials need to empower the existing Independent Community Police Oversight Commission to conduct their own investigations into police misconduct and have access to officer personnel files. I would like you to vote for me, but more importantly, I want you to know that you have the power to shape your own destiny. In these difficult times, it's easy to get discouraged and depressed, to feel like change will never come and you're just a pawn in a giant chess game. But you're not. Recent events have shown the power of everyday people. City Council was going to continue to delay or vote down the A20 plan until public comment was flooded with phone calls from everyday people trying to provide a better life for the next generation, and massive protests across the nation are changing the way localities handle law enforcement. Vote in the primary on August 4th, but please don't let your political involvement end there. If we work together, we can build a better Ann Arbor. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jack Eaton, and I'm running for reelection to the Ann Arbor City Council in Ward Four. I've lived in Ann Arbor for thirty-five years. My wife and I have lived in the Dickon Neighborhood for twenty-two years, where we raised our kids. I've had the privilege of representing the Fourth Ward on City Council since 2013. I'm a retired lawyer. I spent my legal career representing labor unions and their members. I care deeply about working people and their ability to afford to live in our city. The 2020 City Council election is important because the council will face the many challenges of the pandemic and the recession. I have the knowledge and the experience to face these challenges. I have a strong record of listening to residents and representing their common sense priorities. Neither of my opponents have been elected to any office. Neither has served a full term of office. Neither has been involved in an annual budget process for a local governmental body. This election provides a choice between experience and promises. This is not the time for on-the-job training. I've been through seven city budget cycles and understand the competing demands that the city's revenue shortfalls will require us to face. The city is fortunate to have a city administrator who served as our chief financial officer for sixteen years, including the period of the last recession. He's presented a plan to address the expected reduction in revenue. However, during the next budget year, we will need to identify resources to address the additional human services needs that arise during a recession. At the same time, we will need to continue to fund our essential services. I'm proud of my record of increasing funding for street maintenance. I'm proud of my record of seeking more aggressive cleanup of the gellman plant. As we emerge from this recession, the city will continue to grow. Our residents must have a say in how that growth occurs. My opponents support relaxing zoning rules to allow multi-unit buildings in single-family residential neighborhoods. I believe that our neighborhoods are what make this town special and should be protected from expensive, oversized development. I will continue to pursue neighborhood-friendly development. As a council member, I have championed transparency, accountability, responsiveness, and community values. In my next term, I will continue to be guided by those principles. Please visit my campaign website to learn more about me and my campaign, eatonforcouncil.com. Voters have an important choice to make in this election. I hope that you will vote for me on or before August 4th. Thank you.
I am Dr. Mushgan Sababi Espahani, and I'm running for City Council on my own dime. I will never have to answer to any campaign contributors. My opponent, Ms. Ayer, is sitting on a mountain of campaign contributions. Ms. Ayer has surrounded herself with old party hacks. Those old party hacks have delivered us to the ditch that we are in right now: no fifteen-dollar minimum wage, contaminated water, and Ann Arbor is more segregated than it has ever been before. I survived Israeli military violence, US police violence, and United States economic embargo against Iran. Those are all racist violence, and I never will support any of those measures. I am also against increase in policing. Mr. Eaton is all about more funding and more police on our streets. Mr. Eaton even wants proactive policing, which is nothing less than scaring the hell out of black people. Ann Arbor spends thirteen million dollars each year on policing. We should spend that money on community development until every child in Ann Arbor is seen through a good college and into a good job. Those millions could also pay for six hundred units of public affordable housing. I will fight for fifteen-dollar minimum wage and for unions. I will push to abolish the racist practice of single-family zoning, as they have done in Minneapolis and Grand Rapids already. I will vote to destroy racial segregation in Ann Arbor. That's because I am the only candidate to stand consistently against racism here. I am the only non-white candidate in Ward Four. I stood against the racist "stand your ground" law long before Mr. Eaton was in the council. I will vote to stop military aid to Israel. Israel has slaughtered thousands of Palestinians. It is a real Holocaust. Israel is a Nazi state. We should not pay them a penny. That money should go instead to children's healthcare, education, and jobs. I am the only candidate who stands firmly for an immediate cleanup of city's gellman dioxin contamination. Stop stalling and clean it up now. Please check my campaign video on my website, votefordtheDoctor.com. That's votefordtheDoctor.com. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erica Briggs, and I'm running for City Council in the Fifth Ward. I love Ann Arbor. I love our downtown, our cultural amenities, our charming neighborhoods, great schools, and parks, but mostly, I love our shared values that we have in this community. In Ann Arbor, we have a collective concern for the common good, whether that means working to protect the environment or fighting for social justice and equity issues. We also have a fierce desire to help our neighbors. I experienced this when I moved to Ann Arbor. I was twenty-three, and I was a young, single mom with an eight-week-old baby. I had just ended an unhealthy and abusive relationship, and what I found in Ann Arbor was a community ready to support me on every step of my journey. Now, fast forward twenty years, and my life is pretty good. I have a wonderful, supportive husband, and now two great boys. My oldest graduated from Pioneer High School and is a junior in college, and my youngest is a sixth grader at Slosson Middle School. I'm the executive director of a statewide environmental nonprofit, and I just finished my PhD in political science, and I've worked for the last fifteen years to build sustainable and livable communities. Here in Ann Arbor, I've served on the Ann Arbor Planning Commission, fighting for better development, and I've served on the Port of the Washmaw Bicycling and Walking Coalition, fighting for safer streets for walkers and bikers. Another thing that I love about Ann Arbor is that we are a community. Another thing that I love about Ann Arbor is that we are a community that demands more than basic services. In fact, our city's mission is to provide exceptional services that enhance and sustain a diverse, safe, and vibrant community. Now, being a safe community means that we do things like build streets that are safe enough for our kids to bike to school, but it also means that we have a community that where every single person knows that the police are there to help serve and protect them. Being a diverse community means that we don't become so unaffordable that only the wealthy can live here. But doing these things requires us to have elected officials that will listen, listen to us as the community, and listen to those who are issue experts. It also requires us to have elected officials that will seek to unify us rather than divide us into political camps of the Democratic Party. If you elect me, I will bring my deep commitment to ethical and professional public service, my passion for community engagement, and my many years of service in the community and my experience doing that to serve you on Ann Arbor City Council. Thank you so much, and I hope to earn your vote on August 4th.
Hi, my name's Dan Mcnevich. I'm running for City Council in Ann Arbor's Fifth Ward. I'm running for City Council because you'll often hear local politicians talk about people like me and my coworkers. We work in the food service industry, and a lot of us can't afford to live in Ann Arbor. Local politicians will say things like, "There are eighty-some-odd thousand people who commute to Ann Arbor a day. Don't you think some of them would like to live here?" And my response to something like that is that, you know, I work with these people. I organize with these people politically often, and I think that we can do a better job of advocating for our own interests than any version of City Council in recent history has done or will do for us. The things I'm prioritizing during my campaign and the things that I would be prioritizing on City Council are things like housing. I think we should be really placing an emphasis on finding a revenue source for the creation of new social housing that we can see through the Ann Arbor Housing Commission. I'm also interested in pursuing the ideas of something like a community land trust, which I think could help make Ann Arbor a more affordable place both for people who already live here and might be being priced out and for people who work here and might want to live here in the future. Prioritizing the community's relations with the police. I think that we should be reallocating funds away from the armed police force that we have and toward programs and services that go toward addressing the root causes of poverty and inequality. I'm also interested in, generally speaking, economic fairness. We live in one of the most, both racially and economically stratified areas of the country, and we could do things directly as the city, like paying our city employees, our direct city employees a living wage, which we don't do for all city employees, and that's something I think we should be doing. My political home is a democratic socialist America. And something about my political philosophy that I can share with you is that I'd like to mitigate the worst harms that we see in society and make people's lives better right now while still focusing on a vision for a more just and equal society. And I think we can do both, and I think that's the sort of vision that's needed on City Council. We've got a lot of issues that our current existing leadership has been able to identify that we need to work on, but they haven't been addressing these issues at the scale necessary. And I'd like to be on council to make sure that we maintain our commitment to things like climate and housing. Thank you. My name is Dan Mcnevich, and I'm running for City Council in the Fifth Ward.
Hi, I'm David Silkworth. I'm running for the Fifth Ward City Council seat. This election will determine the future path our city takes on a wide range of issues. I support the recent efforts to move toward a more caring and humane style of community placing, as well as the current attempt to negotiate additional police reforms. I support a robust, independent police oversight commission, including providing access to lien, subpoena power for records and documents, and more funding for conducting independent investigations. Racial justice includes working to resolve social justice issues. Some longtime residents, whether from historically disadvantaged communities or other groups, have struggled to keep pace with the prosperity shared by many. And our city needs to make sure we create a healthy, supportive environment for our most vulnerable residents. I'll work to provide an adequate supply of housing that is affordable to low and lower-middle income residents. We also need to maintain affordability of our current housing. Simply increasing the supply of housing hasn't worked. And raising local taxes to provide more housing won't solve this complex problem. I'll support the continuation of our single-family residential zoning districts, which have provided protection, stability, and outstanding quality of life for our residents. We don't have to be disruptive to people's homes and lives to achieve our goals. As an aspirational document, I support the revised A20 plan that was ultimately adopted by council because it attempts to address climate change, but it no longer includes the sweeping land use changes that would have been disruptive to our neighborhoods. Densification of our neighborhoods will not solve our affordability problems or help us reach our climate goals. State laws prevent us from mandating that affordable units be built and from imposing stricter environmental requirements. The free markets fail to adequately provide either of these without incentives. I support historic preservation and the continued protection of our natural features. I'll ensure that your opinions on these and other important issues will be vigorously sought and well-represented at the council table. Today, in the midst of our social justice, COVID-19, affordable housing, and climate crisis were presented with a series of challenges. To address these, we must listen carefully to community concerns, work collaboratively with key stakeholders, and seek long-term solutions. Toward this end, I'll be an independent voice and problem solver, not aligned with any local faction or slate. I'll listen to all good ideas, no matter where they originate, and I'll collaborate with all community leaders and council members who advance solutions that will be in your best interest. Together with you, I'm ready to take on these challenges as your Fifth Ward council member. Please visit my website, votedavidsilkworth.org, to learn more about my campaign, and remember to vote David Silkworth in the August 4th Democratic primary, because together, we can make a difference.
This concludes a presentation by candidates running for Ann Arbor City Council. This program is available for viewing online. Visit atugov.org/watchctn. Remember to do your part and vote on August 4th.